The rules are no cheering, no clapping, no booing, no heckling of any kind. Let's keep it classy and allow our candidates the time they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here. This is a good turnout and I'm happy to be, I'm actually honored to be here today. My name is Greg Scorrisi. I am an attorney here in Salt Lake. I've practiced law for 42 years. Every one of those years has been in Salt Lake City. So I need to get closer to the microphone and that I will do. Okay, so you don't need that introduction again. Anyway, I could, you want to hear from the candidates, not from me. We are going to begin with a short introduction from the candidates. And with five candidates, we're going to limit remarks to two minutes each. We've got some timekeepers up here who will remind you of that. And if it goes past two minutes, I'll give you a little nudge myself. But I don't see that as being a problem. These are very impressive candidates you have and you're very lucky to have a group like that here. So let's just jump right into it. We're going to start with two-minute candidate introduction. The order has been randomly selected. We had nothing to do with this. And the order will be as follows. Blake McClary, Jake Sestrand, Chris Wharton, David Berg, and Lyddie Hunsman Hernandez. After this, I will speak to you only by your first names. So when I say you're up, you're up. And then it will rotate from there, so it'll be clear when you get going. And we've had a few people in the audience who have asked me to supplement our questions with their questions, and I'm going to try to do that and work them in. But our distinguished hosts here wrote some very good questions for us. I might tweak them just a tiny bit with some of the things that audience members have asked for. So again, sit back. This is wonderful. I've participated in these myself, having run for office and lost three times. So I know what this process is like. And...
Turn your phones off.
And turn your phones off. Shoot, I just reminded. No nos buzzing or anything like that. All right, so let's start with Blake McClary. Two-minute candidate introduction.
Hello, testing, testing.
Okay.
I'm going to stand because I am a standard. Hello, everybody. My name is Blake McClary. The first thing you should know is if you have not already, go grab a brownie from that table because, man, those are delicious. These are better than your average of brownies. If somebody here made them, thank you. Those were very, very good. I'm serious. Okay. Well, my name is Blake. By way of introduction, I am an Avenue's resident. I live on 10th Avenue and H Street. I'm a board member of the Avenue's Community Council. I help organize the Avenue Street Bear every year. I help coach my son's Avenue's baseball team. And my kids attend Ensign Elementary, where we volunteer quite a bit with that school. So I am very deeply rooted in the community. Now, you may ask yourself, why would anybody be dumb enough to run against Chris here? He's a nice guy. He's well-funded. He's been in office now for two terms. The short answer is I have an issue that I really cared about. Like many of you, I went to City Hall. I cared about school closures. For those who don't know, last year we closed four elementary schools in Salt Lake City. And I kind of got the runaround from City Hall, if I'm being honest. I was passed from City Council to the School Board, to City Council, to the Mayor. And at every step, I never really felt heard. I didn't feel like the issue I cared about was a priority. And I didn't feel confident that anybody at City Hall had a plan. So I decided we could do something about it. Now, over the course of this year, I have now knocked 3,600 doors in our neighborhood. And the fun thing for me up here is I see many of you in the audience and I know I've knocked on your door. We've had conversations. That is honestly the coolest part of this. And what I can tell you is confidently that I know many of you are not feeling heard by City Hall as well. I personally think after eight years, after a decade, it's time to shake it up. It's time for a change. One thing I will leave you with is that this data point, in the last 20 years, we have not had a City Council member or mayor successfully win a third term in office. I would ask yourself, why is that? Why is that the case? I think we agree that after about a decade, it's time for a change. That's why I'm running.
Thank you, Blake. Jake Sestrand.
Thank you. All right, hello, everybody. I'm honored to be here and I want to thank our organizers and everyone that came together to make this happen. First of all, I'm Jake Sestrand and I am running because I love this city. I'm a resident of this district. I live in Guadalupe on 6th West and with my husband are two dogs. By day, I'm a judicial assistant at the Salt Lake County Justice Court. That's my career. That's what I've been doing for the last four-plus years. That's an amazing job because it has taught me that the policies that are enacted by our leaders in legislature, even our City Council, they do have a major effect on the day-to-day lives of people from a financial standpoint, even up until, you know, the way that we run our day-to-day lives. So as a City Council member, I would run on three major platforms. I'd like to champion smart housing and growth. I'd like to address our livability issues. We have a cost of living crisis that's just continually going up. I'd like to try and address that. Secondly, a public safety standpoint, I'd like to see our property crime and violent crime rates go up or go down with a, with some tools I have. And then number three, I'd like to address the, prioritize infrastructure. There's several improvements in our neighborhoods that I'd like to see addressed. I would bring a common sense, a hard work ethic. I'm also a small business owner. And so I bring all these things to the table as your City Council member. I appreciate your time and look forward to discussing this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. We'll hear from Chris Wharton.
All right, thank you. First of all, thanks to all of three of the great Avenue's Community Council, Capitol Hill Community Council, and Fair Park Community Council. These are awesome community councils to work with. I have the privilege of working with them, all three of them, every month. And thank you for hosting this debate. And thank you to my opponents for your care about our district. My name's Chris Wharton. I'm the current council member for District Three. And I live just about a block this way on 2nd West with my husband and our 16-month-old daughter and our corgis and our two porch cats. And I am an attorney in my day job. And I've been your council member for the last two terms. I am running for reelection for one more term on the council because experience really matters right now in government. I want to be able to keep working for you and keep delivering in the areas that you've told me are the most important. Affordability, especially in housing, sustainability for our future growth, parks and public spaces, having a thriving downtown and making sure that our streets are safe. And I want, I deliver for you on every single one of those issues and I want to keep doing that. You know, just earlier today, this job isn't just about these neighborhood issues. Earlier today, I had to go up to the Capitol two times for two different meetings to fight just so that we can maintain control of our roads here in Salt Lake City and to make sure that we're meeting, that we're balancing the need for transportation with also making our streets safer. And in some ways, we every year are losing power from the legislature preempting us on different issues. On the federal level, we're losing funding for critical programs like our after-school programs for certain sustainability initiatives. All of those things are going to matter and they're going to come and affect all of us. You want to have someone that's experienced, that's been at the table, that has dealt with these issues before to get us through these difficult times.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Well, next here for David Berg.
All right. Hello. First, I do want to thank the community councils. Of course, I'm part of the Greater Avenue's Community Council. I'm really proud to be on there. Happy to work with the Capitol Hill Community Council and the Fair Park Community Council, which we've done in the past. I helped to organize the Meet the Candidates social that we've done on even years in November in Memory Grove. It's a real great opportunity to get more people more involved. That's kind of, that's why I'm here. I want to get more people more involved. I think I, and I walk the walk, so I'm here myself as well. You'll also see that I'm just, I'm not as, I want to thank my co-candidates here as well. I may not be as polished as them, but I'll tell you, I've got the ideas, I've got the passion, and I'll make a difference on the City Council. I live in the Avenue's, I'm a lifelong Salt Lake resident, lived in the Avenue's for 20 years. We're up there with my partner, who's a high school counselor, our daughter, and another on the way in March. So I care about affordability as well very much and want to make that a difference with. The affordability is just getting out of control. We've lived there for a long time, love the area, but we can't afford to buy a home, quite frankly. So we've been renters, but we're looking. My roots go back to 1892 in Salt Lake City where my great-grandparents, they originally immigrated to Logan and then there. So we've got deep family roots. They actually moved to an apartment in Salt Lake that is pretty close to exactly where I am, to where the clinic I work at is. But I hope to get money out of politics. When we see things like this, billion dollars to billionaires coming out of our pockets, imagine what we could do if we put that money to people and community first. We could have universal healthcare in Salt Lake City. We could have universal childcare. We could have universal pre-K. Imagine what that would do rather than, you know, having a hockey, I love hockey as much as the next guy, basketball, health center events. It's just not worth it. And if he wants to, and if they want to take it to Draper, that's fine. We need community first in Salt Lake City. And that's where our money and resources need to go. And I'll fight for that. Thanks.
Next up, we'll hear from Lyddie.
Just want to say thank you to all the community councils for hosting this tonight. It's an honor to be up here. It's an honor to be up with all these fine gentlemen. My name's Lyddie Hunsman Hernandez. I'm a mother, I'm an advocate, and I've really been in this district since I was born. Born and raised here, I left to explore the world, like many of you, and I've come back now to raise my family because this is home. District Three to me is where I experienced my first kiss. It's where I experienced my first heartbreak. It's where I experienced the first consequences of sneaking out of the house. But it's also where I first learned about adversity, when I was first diagnosed with type of diabetes at the age of seven. So this isn't just where I grew up. This is really where I became who I am. I just want to make sure that you guys all remember tonight that this City Council race is a nonpartisan race. I am proud to be not only the only female up here, but I'm the only one that is unaffiliated because I do not believe that special interest groups or political organizations should own our voices. We should own our voices. And I'm not here to fit a label. I'm here to solve problems. As you all know, we're in a crossroads downtown, not the mall. We miss the mall recipes. But we are at a crossroads where, you know, we're in a budget deficit. Public safety and mental health are outpacing our ability to respond. We're in a real problem. Yet, City Hall and City Council and the Mayor are more worried about prioritizing billionaires who do not live here and who pays the price for this lovely gift to Ryan Smith. We do. I think that's unacceptable. I do not believe that's leadership. I believe that's failure. So if you want to talk about affordability, why don't we ask why the city keeps pouring gas on a fire? That's what's happening. I want to be very realistic about what's happening in our city. There are three things that I will always ask when I'm elected to City Council. Does this improve affordability? Does this improve our quality of life? And does government have a role in this? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So candidates, you've just seen sort of the order that you're going to go today, although we'll rotate who starts, but you'll follow the person and I'll correct you if you're losing track here. So when we, we're going to have five questions for each of you and you'll each have two minutes to answer those questions. When we're done, we'll allow each of you another two minutes to summarize. So question number one, we'll begin with Blake again. Question number two will begin with Jake. And Chris will start question three, if you understand that. Again, I'll jump on you if you're missing out, but you sort of know who you're following now. And then we'll proceed that way. With five questions and five candidates in two minutes and closing remark, we want to get this wrapped up within the timeframe that's allotted for us. So thank you for starting out that way and being very timely. Question one will begin as follows. Each candidate, starting with Blake, if elected as one of seven council members, you will need to work with leaders from state, county, and city to address the needs of District Three residents and others. How do you plan to do that? And for our incumbent council member, could you share an example of when you have worked with other state, county, or city council members for District Three? We'll start with Blake.
Okay. Again, I'm going to stand. I'm a standard. Another PSA, I'm sorry to say. If you have not gotten the brownies, make sure to get the brownies. And I won't make that joke anymore. Okay. So collaboration. I just wanted to briefly talk about my day job. So what I do for a living is I work in technology. I build software for a living. Usually what this entails is trying to basically make the impossible possible. We build software and build giant companies and do really hard things. Now, the only way that's possible is by collaborating with a bunch of different stakeholders to build a product that people use that we can sell. I see a lot of ancillary, or excuse me, I see a corollary here between the job of a City Council person and what I do in my day job. What I mean by that is this. The job of a City Council person has to be extremely collaborative, right? As mentioned, there are seven other, or six other people on council. Plus, you have all the other stakeholders besides residents. We have county, states, et cetera. School Board is a huge one. So my default stance is to take a very collaborative approach to anything that I'm doing. I want to first understand, so I will be generally asking a lot of questions. And then I will play back what I heard. Hey, I heard you say this. Did I understand that correctly? And my entire goal is just to find solutions because I am a very pragmatic person. That is how I, that is how I operate. So when you think about my role on council, it will not be, you know, tweeting and press conferences about people saying, hey, they're messing us up or they're not helping us or whatever. It's behind-the-scenes collaboration, just get stuff done. That's all I care about.
Thank you, Blake. We'll hear from Jake. And you can stand or sit wherever you're comfortable with.
I'm happy to continue standing. Maybe that'll change as we go. This is a great question because as a City Council member... Can you hear me? Okay. All right, I'll hold it better, thanks. As a City Council member, you'll, I do understand that we'll need to work with other people and other leaders and other stakeholders. I want to apply this to how I run my day-to-day life. I am a business owner. I also work in the County Justice Court. These are two different worlds. We have court and we have marketplace. How do those coincide? In a lot of ways, they don't. But the way that they do coincide is that both involve a lot of collaboration between people that are above you, people that are below you or next to you. And we all need to work together to find a common goal. So as a collaborator, that is at my core. I'd be able to work with anybody from any side. I'd be able to see anybody's position on it. And if I don't understand it, I will be upfront about it and I'll learn about it. And then I will dive in and tell them how I feel about this path we're on. I want you to know that I've never held office before. So this would be a big test of how I'd be able to use my skills as a leader to implement this kind of collaboration. But I do this on a day-to-day basis. So I'd like to reassure you that I do know how to work together. I do know how to balance a budget and I feel like I'd be able to get this done.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. So in my day job, I mentioned, I am an attorney and I mostly do family law. That's a lot of mediating. It's a lot of negotiating. And it can be very high stakes. It can be very high emotions. And so I want to talk about ADUs, accessory dwelling units or mother-in-law apartments. There's been a lot of turnover on the council since I have been there. In the last six years, every district's turned, changed hands at least once, sometimes twice. And when the issue of ADUs came up among our council, the council was split. A lot of council, newer council members wanted to add ADUs. And they wanted to make it easier to build ADUs. And they also wanted to get rid of the owner occupancy requirement. Right now, the owner has to either live in the house or in the ADU. And through that debate, I was able to persuade them that that was the wrong way to go because that was going to be undermining intergenerational wealth building through homeownership. Utah has one of the highest amounts of homes that are owned by corporations or companies. And instead of just having a block where you might have several houses that have ADUs, a developer would come in, could buy all of those houses, could build ADUs in all of those backyards, and then all of them would become rentals. And you can, if you think about that on a street-by-street basis and a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, that can decimate a neighborhood. And they didn't realize, because they didn't have the experience and they hadn't worked on the, been on the council as long as I had and they didn't know about this corporate ownership, that even though they were, we were trying to do the same, the right thing, which was to decrease, to help with affordability in Utah, they, we almost made a huge mistake that would really decimate neighborhoods and harm the most vulnerable. There was also ADU fever up on the hill a couple of years ago and where the legislature thought ADUs were going to solve the affordable housing crisis. And I worked with our state representative to explain how if we don't also regulate short-term rentals, it's not going to help with housing. Those are just two examples of how I've worked on that issue. Thank you.
Next here for David.
It's a good question. While on ADUs, I applaud your work on that. And it sounds like we need higher-quality City Council people from the other areas, more educated. If they didn't know those issues, what's going on over there? That's supposed to be a joke. It's also true. But anyway. While on ADUs, I want to just touch on that they shouldn't, I support them. I also support the owner occupancy requirement. I also think that the ADU should not be bigger than the original home and it shouldn't be bigger than the surrounding homes. That's a problem right now. That's another story also. Collaborating with the state, federal partners, that's an important thing. Yes, I am proud to be the Democratic Party Chair for this area, the HD22, but I follow no party nor policies blindly. Anybody who knows me will know that I support folks across the political spectrum. In my position, I've also started the Utah Civic Slitterancy Project, have been, of course, started the Civic Engagement Committee on the Avenue's Community Council. And while I'm wearing that hat, I'm unapologetic about other hats that I wear. And I am proud and happy to work hand-in-hand with people from all stripes. I call and speak regularly to Republicans, Constitution Party, other Democrats, Libertarians. We need to get more people more involved, whatever their political stripe. I'm proud of the work that I've done to that, with that as well, for ranked choice voting. For example, this is the last time we're going to have it unless we talk to our legislators. We need to talk to Jennifer DeDeProvo, talk to Jennifer Plumb, talk to Senator Wyler, make sure that our lawmakers know they need to extend that ranked choice voting option for cities like Salt Lake City who want it. And we need to expand it across the ballot. To get that passed in the legislature, we had to work with Republicans. And we did. I'm proud of the work that I did, the part that I did. I did not do it alone. I didn't even do it in majority, but I did a part of it and I'm proud of the work I did.
Next for Lyddie.
Wonderful question. So one of the hats that I wear in my life is that I've been an advocate for the type of diabetes community for 30 years. And in that, being an advocate, I was able to start one of the first mental health programs within the diabetes community where when you were first diagnosed with type of diabetes, you were given a bag and it's called the Bag of Hope, to give you hope to keep going. Now, nationally, 5,000 people get those bags. I have a true track record of being an advocate for my community. I will bring those same skills to City Council. This is why I'm so passionate about being unaffiliated because we've not been able to really get anything done, city and state, because we have been so partisan. And I believe that we need to get back to the issues. We need to get back to having voices. A big priority of mine are people, not parties. I learned this in my life. My dad was governor here for two terms. And I learned then what happens when you're able to cross the aisle. You're able to get stuff done. We had the lowest homeless rate, 157 people in 2008. Now it's 5,000 and growing. For me, I want to be the best advocate for this community because I want to cross the aisle and I want to work with both sides. And being unaffiliated, which is what this race is all about, that is how you get stuff done. But we've lost the message of what City Council means. We need to get back to that. That is the only way that we're going to be able to make change, city and state. Thanks.
Thank you. And for question two, we'll start with Jake, followed by Chris. I think you got it down now. So question two is fairly simple, Jake. How familiar are you with the challenges of District Three's homelessness and related crimes? And how would you handle them?
Thank you. I'm very familiar with this. Not only am I, I look out and I see it every day, just living here. But this is what I do for work. As a justice court clerk, I see how the impact of homelessness, how it impacts their life. Not everyone that's homeless is a criminal, let's be honest. And not everyone that is unhoused will become a criminal. What I'm saying is that it's a compounding problem where if you do not have a home or something stable to lean on, you wind up in a situation where you have all of these systems kind of collaborating against you. So my work in the justice court has taught me that the way to break that cycle is to provide compassion, but also accountability. We need to provide these people with options of training. They need stability. They need a house. They need training. And we need to get that back to contributing members of society. So putting people in sanction camps, contributive shelters, it's not going to solve the problem. We need to put money towards these private organizations that already have the structure set up. I'm talking about The Road Home. The Other Side Academy has a great foundation of this. They get people trained, they get them back on their feet, they get them earning the money that puts back into the system. So I feel like we need to be putting in our focus on these kind of programs, not just putting people in camps or putting them in shelters, but giving them real structure. So that's my stance on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Chris?
Thank you. So when I first was running for council for the first time, that was in the midst of the Rio Grande Plan, if you remember that. And that was supposed to solve homelessness, right? We were going to arrest all of these individuals. We were going to get them into shelter and then we were going to get them into homes and get them jobs. Well, then there was the decision to close The Road Home and move to the decentralized shelter. That happened also, right, as I came on the council. And now it's, this only eight years later, we're talking about building another large shelter because there was never enough beds because the state never followed through with Rio Grande Plan. We never got to Phase Two and Three. There's whiplash on homelessness and going back and forth with different leadership changing at the state and at the city and at the county and how we move forward with that. The city's role in homelessness is, if you think of it as an ER, the city's role is the waiting room. That's where you initially come into the system and we have a safe place for you to try to figure out how to treat you best and get you on your way. If we are just keep building emergency rooms or we just keep putting it on the city and we're not investing in doctors or hospital rooms or other types of care, then the problem is going to continue to, we're going to continue to see what we have right now. I'm very familiar with not only all of the things that we've tried in the past. I've seen all of those things in practice. I also do the point-in-time count where I actually go out in the middle of the night and count the individuals that are on the streets, talk to them about what their experiences are, what their needs are. I'm very familiar with this issue. And again, we need some consistency. We need someone who is going to stick with a policy for long enough to see it through to the end. That's what I'll keep doing. That's how I'll keep working for you on this issue.
Thank you, Chris. David?
Thank you. Real good question. I'm very familiar with the issue. I'm a healthcare worker for our unhoused neighbors. Daily, I work with them. I go into the shelters, go into the encampments, trying to make a difference, trying to help with, you know, their healthcare needs specifically. But everything goes along with that. with, you know, their healthcare needs specifically, but everything goes along with that, as well as, of course, behavioral health, even dental, just simple services, bringing folks a trash bag, that's a big thing. How, how would we deal with that? Well, we need to take a compassionate approach first, and a housing-first approach. Once people are not hustling minute by minute to find their next meal, or fix frankly, a lot can be accomplished. The overwhelming, the overwhelming roots of homelessness and addressing that is a key of mine, is addiction services and mental health services. We're not doing enough right now, we need to do more. We also need to have more case managers that can help get services to the people who need the most. I support sanctioned campground, which there has been talk that we have one, we don't have one, I think there's some confusion with the pods, which we spent much more than we could have housed, twice the population in existing housing, to instead put them in basically trailers. It's better than the streets, but it's not a very wise use of money. But I think we need to have basically shelter, a shelter kind of sanctioned campground for folks who won't go into shelters, to where they can be safe, where they can be provided services, where we can also enforce our camp bans, because unfortunately, these current encampments are not safe for anyone, they're not safe for the folks, they're very dangerous for the folks who are in there, and of course, the folks who live around there. So if we compassionately give them a place where it'll make a huge difference. Thanks.
So we have an issue, it's called a revolving door, with homeless here. We have not, with all the money we're spending, we're hemorrhaging money, and we've not been able to figure out, with all the money and resources, how to stop the revolving door. When we're giving so much money, government money, and we're not finding a solution, yet we have local partners, like the Other Side Academy, that does, they do not take government funding, but they've been able to figure out the solution. That's where, that's what wakes me up at night, and I say, how is this possible? How is it that the government cannot figure out how to solve this revolving door, but other local partners can? One of the biggest reasons I'm running is that I want to start the first mental health task force within the city. That means one trained law enforcement officer and one social worker that goes around to all these cases. Forty percent of 911 calls are mental health. What are we going to do about that? We've got to do something about it. And I believe that if we go to the root of the problem, we will decrease incarcerations, we will clean up transit, we will be able to have a better time downtown, families will be able to go to parks, and we'll be able to figure out the revolving door. But clearly, we are relying on systems that are not getting us there. That's why I want to come in and bring in other ideas. Let's look at other ideas that are actually working across the country. Why do we need to keep hiring and hemorrhaging money for a massive warehouse that is just not going to solve any issues? No resources, it is just going to continue with the revolving door. And if we continue on the path, we are going to continue the revolving door. We are up 18% homelessness this year. This homeless shelter is not, is not going to be built for two years. Homelessness is going to be out of control by the time that happens. We have the new LDS temple that's opening, we have the Olympics coming, we have some huge, exciting things happening in Salt Lake City, and we've got to break that revolving door, and that is my goal, if I were to win city council.
Thank you, Liddy. Blake?
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, I've knocked now 3,600 doors in our neighborhood, and homelessness is the number one issue for all of you, and for most everybody in Salt Lake City. And I'd ask you to consider, are you happy with the way we're doing it today? Is anybody really satisfied with how it's going? I'm hearing nobody is. So why would we keep doing the same playbook and expect different results? I think it's somebody's trismally new. To that end, as Liddy mentioned, homelessness is growing 18% year over year. That is a lot, that is an alarming rate, and we need to act with both compassion and very pragmatic solutions. Now, I am in favor of the state's centralized campus. I think that is a good thing, because we have to do everything we possibly can. However, as Liddy also mentioned, that's going to take two years to build. What if homelessness continues to grow at this rate? What are we going to do? This shelter will be oversubscribed, overbooked, before it's even open. We have to act now. And look, whether the city likes it or not, perception is reality, and this is a multifaceted problem, but people don't look at it as a state issue or a county issue. This is a problem within Salt Lake City, so we have to take more ownership. Specifically, I think we need to focus on addiction recovery services, as well as mental health. Those are two issues, or two areas I think we've been lacking in today. Look, you can have a roof over your head, but if you're addicted to fentanyl, that's not going to cure your addiction. We have to do more for our neighbors. This is the compassionate thing to do. Lastly, I will end on this. As David mentioned, sanctioned or designated camping is a good temporary solution. Let's take city-owned land that exists today, let's put tents there, let's put showers, let's put storage lockers, and give these people a place to live, because right now the park is the de facto homeless shelter, and that's not a good option. That's not compassionate for them, and it's not compassionate for those of us who want to use the park as well.
Thank you, Candace. Let's shift now from homelessness to homeownership. Question three, and we'll begin with Chris, is this. One aspect of the American dream is home, homeownership and accessible public education. What is your plan for families wanting to live in Salt Lake City who need moderately priced housing and enough bedrooms, childcare, and public schools?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So, growing up, my dad was a Realtor, and I used to go with him to showings, I had my own little blazer. And his parents were also Realtors, and my husband is a Realtor, and my aunt was a Realtor. And so I come from a family that believes very strongly in the power of homeownership and the dream of homeownership and how to build wealth through homeownership. I talked earlier about that with ADUs. I, I believe in that dream, and it is really hard when you're walking around and knocking on doors, talking with you, hearing, if I hadn't bought my house, you know, this many years ago, I wouldn't have been, I wouldn't be in this neighborhood, I couldn't afford to buy now. Or, I, I have my house here, but my kids want to live here, and they can afford to buy. That's why it's really important that when, that we carry that, have that experience and have that knowledge when we're considering changes to ADUs. And it's why I helped build one of the first programs, that's going to be coming online later this year, that allows renters to build equity while they're renting, through a fund at the city called the Perpetual Homeownership Fund. And through that fund, as they build that equity during their time as renters, they can use that to make the jump from renting to first-time home buying, or they can use it for any other major life circumstance, like, let's say that they're, they're getting close to retirement, and they want to be able to use that money to go into a retirement home. You can also use the equity that you built to do that. Those are the innovative things that are within the city's lane, that are within our area of government, that, that we collect taxes and, and are, it's our obligation to work on. And that is something that we can do that's innovative, and that helps build the missing middle. I'll keep working on programs like that, because I believe in the value of homeownership.
Thank you, Chris. David?
It's a good question. It all boils down to affordability. As I mentioned, I'm a lifelong Salt Laker, and I haven't been able to afford to buy a home. So I know the struggles of renting, that's what I've been doing all my life, well, since we moved out of the parents' house, anyway. It all comes down to affordability, and you'll hear affordability and affordable housing talked about a lot. What does that mean, though? You know, because something, everything is affordable to somebody. Salt Lake City's current definition of, of so-called affordable housing is absolutely bonkers. It's, it comes, it's judged by AMI, Area Immediate Income. What's that? Who knows? But I'll tell you what it is, is it's linked to the wealth, and a reflection of the wealthiest amongst us. When you get down to the brass tacks, when you get down to the actual numbers, they say 80% of AMI is affordable. It comes down to $2,726 is considered affordable by Salt Lake City's current definition. That's absolutely bonkers, especially when you consider that the average marketplace rent, you can Google that right now, average marketplace rent in Salt Lake City is $1,452. So we're saying, if you build something $1,300 more expensive than market rate housing, you're eligible, you're eligible, Mr. Developer, to corporate welfare, you're, that could and should go to funding actual affordable housing. It's absolutely crazy. We need to change that, we need to change from AMI to federal poverty level, which is the same standard we use to judge the, whether people qualify for free or reduced lunch, school lunch, for Medicaid, for so many other programs. And that's a better reflection of what those who are living the need are experiencing. Right now, we're just giving money to wealthy developers, it's kind of a kickback for really donation, campaign donations, that's why I'm not taking campaign donations, I need money out of politics. Thanks.
Let's hear from Liddy.
Okay, in 1980 here, how many of you guys were able to get a mortgage here in 1980? Okay, you guys are the good ones here. Okay, 1980, 80% or 84% of people had a mortgage. Today, it's 40%. That's not okay. So when you want to talk about affordability in this city, families are being priced out. Affordable housing that doesn't exist for families, because they're only one bedrooms and studios. How do we help these families stay here? How do we get people to be able to have homeownership? I really want to talk, and I know it's a state issue, but we have not talked about minimum wage since 2008 in the state. The median household in Green River is $190,000. The minimum wage is $7.25. The median household here is $1 million. The minimum wage is $7.25. So something's not working here, and I think we need to do a better job when it comes to affordability. We need to help programs, we need to get real estate investors to maybe do more on ownership instead of rentals. We need to incentivize people and help them own. That's how you get stability, that's how families can survive, is through stability and through homeownership. Families are a big beacon of our economy, and we need to protect them and help them. So as city council, I will help, whatever I can, to help families getting to homeownership, right? Like, let's work through, I don't believe that the avenues should be high density, we should have gentle density. I think that in terms of affordable housing, we should look over here to the Marmalade District. This is a great place, we're close to transit over here, it's easy. But we have a, we have a big hill that we need to climb and figure out how we can get people to start owning again, because we are in a renters' market, which it should be the opposite.
Thank you. Blake?
We're going to start with a pop quiz, okay? Audience participation. How much do you think you have to make in order to afford a home in the Avenue's in 2025? Any guesses? Can I see a two, three hundred, is that three? Okay, 300, anybody else? 300, go once, go twice, 300, anyone? Two of any? Four, okay. It's 215. $215,000 is how much you have to make a year in order to afford comfortably a home in the Avenue's. That is just crazy. To me, this highlights the fact that we have to move with urgency and vision. This is important, because, I'm going to pitch you an idea here that might sound crazy, but vision is what severely lacks at City Hall today. We have to try very big, bold, ambitious things, and if we don't, then we're just going to get the same results. Truly, we have to throw out the playbook and try something new. So here's my pitch. You might think it's crazy, you might think it's impossible, but again, we have to throw everything at this. My vision is that we should, as a city, buy the lot where LDS Hospital currently sits today. We know that Intermountain Healthcare will be building a new hospital over at the Sears Lot on State Street. Because this is a strategically important parcel to the city, this is about 20 acres, huge blank canvas. The city should either buy the land outright, or do a public-private partnership with Intermountain, and build townhomes for $500,000, or less than $500,000. And you might say to yourself, Blake, that's not affordable. And yeah, you're kind of right, but guess what? That's where we're at in 2025, which is crazy. Okay? So again, this idea might be crazy, but we've got to try it. Otherwise, we're just going to get the same thing. We're going to get townhomes on Third and M for $1 million that sit vacant. That's not a good outcome. We need for purchase inventory, something that people can buy, we need family-sized, because studio apartments is not it, we need larger units. LDS Hospital site is the place, and come find me if you want to hear more about this afterward.
Thank you, Blake. Jake?
Okay, I figured it out. I'm going to try the wireless model, I think it's better. I love this topic, because this is actually why I started the run. All of my friends, I'm 36 years old, all of my professional friends have moved out of Salt Lake, they can't afford to live here. We are losing talent, we are losing families. This is a crisis that I want to address, this is how I'll do it. We get lost in these big, grandiose plans to address housing. It's pretty simple. The city can control zoning. That's a very taxpayer, zero taxpayer money involvement in that. The city has gone forward in removing exclusionary zoning practices. I love that they head this direction, I want to carry it forward to the finish line. The state handed the city a gift when they passed Senate Bill 181. What does this say? It says that they ended the parking mandates. How does this directly affect homeownership? 12% of the cost of a home is directly related to parking mandates and requirements. That is a 12% savings in the cost of a home, just right there, where we don't have to require parking mandates anymore. So the state handed us a gift in that. They failed to pass the other bills that were going to address density, which was the ADU bill, and the parcel lot size bill. So that's why the city needs to lead out, and within our district and within our purview as a city, we can address these. So the way to address this problem would be strictly zoning. I think that we could do overlay zones, it would cost, you know, homeowners, taxpayers nothing, and it would address the cost of living pretty directly. My final thought on this is that housing, we need to increase homeownership. So I would be all for grants, for homebuyer grants, and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jake. Question four deals with urban planning, and we're going to start with David. David, Salt Lake City is experiencing current national urban planning trends with changes to the flow of our city streets and traffic. How do you see the relative role of public transportation, parking, bike lanes, and safe streets in the continued development of Salt Lake City? And one of our, one of our guests wants to know, if we're going to bring people to Salt Lake City, why are we charging so much for parking? You could work that into your answer, that would be great, too.
It's about moving people, not cars necessarily, though we are moving a lot of cars, and we need to be realistic about that. There's so much parking in Salt Lake right now. You'd actually be astounded to know how much parking there is that goes unused. Most of it privately owned, a lot of it owned by the church, actually, and it needs to be better utilized. Really quickly, I do want to just step, super quickly onto the last question. I've got to mention, I want to ban application fees and junk fees for apartments and for housing, and where Salt Lake City does some public housing, where we build, own, and control housing, and we'd have an effect on actually affordable housing that way. But let's get back to the question at hand. Transit's important, I think we need to consult the public more, we need to consult our neighborhood more. There's a lot of things happening that are not going to the community council, just see suddenly divided, protected bike lane, which is generally a good thing, but a lot of times, it can be built very poorly, and that's happening daily in the city. It's astounding the rate that this is happening. I saw on 300 West by the shelter, where they put a traffic calming median in one day, with the next week, they had to spend all the money to remove it, because they didn't actually plan it well, they didn't talk to the community. We need more consultation on that, but we need to support, we need to get rid of the nearly empty ghost buses in the avenues and replace them with more sensible transit for the area. We need to bring UTA, UTA On Demand, which is the Uber kind of thing that UTA runs, but it's not available in this district right now. Why is that? It's been in the, on the West Side for, and I should say District Four, for about a decade. It's crazy we're not doing that now.
Thank you, David. Thanks. Thank you very much. Liddy?
So when I talk about, we are paying for the mistakes of City Hall. Parking is a great example of that. We are now up to $3.50 downtown with a maximum of two hours. We now have a timestamp on celebrations downtown, because when you take out parking spots, that had revenue, you're going to lose revenue. that had revenue, you're going to lose revenue. And we've lost a lot of revenue, so who has to pay for it now? You do. So I think that we do not have an appropriate, I do not think anyone that's driving around town, nobody can agree that we have an organized transportation plan. I think we all can agree. The new mascot of Salt Lake City is the orange comb. It's amazing. But we need to get it. So I'm all about smart growth. Why are we doing this? Why does Virginia Street have seven speed bumps? I Street has zero. E Street has zero. 11th Ave, I think, has like one or two. When you drive by Ensign in the mornings, the police are there because they're escorting kids to school because traffic has gotten so horrific up there. That is unacceptable. I think we need to start planning. We need to start thinking of families that are trying to get around town. We need to start thinking of how do we make this smart? How do we get people to and from their job? Majority of people who work downtown in Salt Lake City don't live here. They can't take a bike to work. They can't take tracks to work. So my whole thing is like, we need to start making our systems more efficient. Buses should not be running every 30 minutes. Let's get them like New York. We want to be a big city over here. Let's get it five to six, seven minutes at a time if we have a dedicated lane to buses. Let's get tracks to open up 24/7 so that you can take the tracks home from the airport at 10:00 PM. So that's where for me, I'm like, okay, I understand we're a growing city. I'm all for public transit. I took the UTA bus to school every morning growing up. I think it's wonderful, but we need to do a better job when it comes to smart growth. And so that's what I will advocate as city council.
Thank you, Lydie. We're here for Blake.
When it comes to transportation in Salt Lake City, I think there's one principle that City Hall has applied, and that's a lack of pragmatism. I'll give you an example. It feels like a lot of our roads today are lipstick on a pig. You go through Marmalade, and there are potholes everywhere, yet there are 20 speed bumps. That, by the way, if you don't go five miles an hour, your car's going to get broken. Why wouldn't we just first fix the actual road before we put 20 speed bumps on it? And look, we all want safer streets. We want slower traffic. This is a good thing. We can all agree on that. But I think we've gotten a little overboard today. And the fact that we don't fix the underlying problem first, which is the actual road quality, to me is bewildering. It's a bit like we put the cart before the horse. I don't understand that. I'm a cyclist. I've put 2,000 miles on my bike, biking all around this city. I love bike infrastructure. However, like I said with the speed bumps, we've got a little overboard. I would rather see a better-built-out bike infrastructure, but not on every road than a bike lane on every single road today. If you've been over to the Nine Line and you know where that is on 900 South, that is a fantastic bike infrastructure project. Let's have more of those. But we do not need to make every single city in Salt Lake City bike accessible. I just don't believe that. And the reason why is because we are a commuter city. You might not like it, but our daytime population swells by 50% every day. So we have to be able to move cars through the neighborhoods. And within the avenues, 60% of us drive to work. This is a city report. So those of us who should be highly incentivized and it should be very easy for us to get around on bike, transit, et cetera, we're still predominantly using cars. So we have to have a balanced approach here. We have good principles, but let's not go overboard.
Thank you, Blake. Jake?
All right, thank you for this question. The concern about transportation is how are we going to address the last mile? This is that point of, of time between when you make it home or before you make it home. In between those, you know, transit option opportunities. We need to make transit so accessible that it is actually idiotic to take a car, that you're able to get from point A to point B in that final mile without having to get into a car. So I foresee Salt Lake City heading in this direction, but I'd like to see us do more. And I disagree with Blake in this point. I do think we do need to improve the bike lanes in a lot of our, our streets. Why do people drive? Because we don't have a lot of infrastructure for bike lanes. I think that we need to improve this area of the city. I also think that we need to focus on the simple things. Sidewalk repair, make things more walkable. The avenues, I was canvassing, I've been canvassing this whole time, and I've tripped, I think, four or five times on several sidewalks that could be addressed. These are simple fixes that we could do as a city, and I'd like to champion those. We don't have to focus on these big, large product projects. We could focus on the simple stuff, and that would make a big difference. I've heard that Salt Lake City has the fourth-best transportation system in the country. That's incredible. We do have a robust transportation system, but we could do more. So I'd like to see more funding and more money put into that.
Thank you very much, Jake. Chris?
Thank you so much. So on my neighborhood street here, Third West, I've seen a couple dogs get hit by cars. I've seen cats get hit by cars. I've seen near misses with kids get hit by cars. It's kind of a busy neighborhood street, and we have traffic, we have these islands, and we have these trees that are meant to slow people down. At the same time, I hear the frustration of neighbors that are saying there's too many speed bumps. And this is the issue, it, it is a balance. And I'll tell you that every, this is the issue that I hear the most from constituents about, that I answer the most emails about. And every, for every email that says, slow this down, I want more speed bumps in this neighborhood, there is an email that says, I hate the speed bumps in this neighborhood. Rip them out. It, it, it's, it's a paradox. It's like, you keep complaining about being in traffic. Like, you're not stuck in traffic, you are traffic. Everybody wants the calming on their streets, but they don't want calming on any of the other streets. It, it's a balance. And with the downtown population doubling, we can't just be car-centric because no families are going to want to live downtown if there isn't more multimodal options to live downtown. That impacts school enrollment. All of these issues are connected, and so we do need a balance. So for all the traffic calming and issues that you've seen in the city, we are also investing in the major boulevards of the city, the major arteries of the city. We're adding bus lanes. We're paying UTA to add more frequent bus lanes with more stops so that people can rely more on public transit, so that people can actually bike to work if they choose to do that. And one other thing that we've done is put a free bus pass in the hands of every Salt Lake City School District student and one of their parents to help encourage public transit use. We're doing all of these innovative things because we recognize that there is a balance. You're going to find more about this in the paper tomorrow with UTHAT's study that they just released. I hope you read about it.
Thanks, Chris. Let's get to our last question, question five. And I'm glad we have such a young group of candidates here to talk about this. What is your vision for Salt Lake City in the next five to 10 years? And how do you plan to get us there? And one of our guests asked if we could talk about maybe your top three issues to, to accomplish that. We'll start with Lydie.
Okay, a good question. So my vision for Salt Lake City, I want it to be a thriving place for families, for people who can have their dreams here, who can have ownership of homes, who can be proud to say that they are from Salt Lake City. I dream of a vision of Salt Lake where we can come together as neighbors and respect each other again. I dream of a day that we can all enjoy and have safe roads and have parks to go to with not having fear of something happening with our kids. I was always taught to leave a better place for the next generation. I'm running because I don't believe Salt Lake City can do that for the next generation. And I want to do everything in my power to help make this a better place for the next generation because they deserve it. I would love to focus on more heavy investments, economic investments downtown. We do not have a Fortune 500 company within downtown Salt Lake City. There is no reason why we don't have a little fintech hub or anything to create jobs where then we can actually own these homes. My vision, I mean, this is one of the greatest cities in the world. It's why I'm here, is why I'm raising my family. But we need to clean up. We need to do more about public safety. We need to help our neighbors when they're dealing with mental health crises. We need to get down to the root of the issues that is happening in our city. Because if we do not help our city and our neighbors, we're not going to be able to thrive. No matter how many billionaires you give free projects to, we're not going to be able to survive if we do not take care of each other. I hope that we can at least be able to not have a running deficit, right? Like, in the future, we should be able to be expanding on investments downtown. We have the Olympics coming up. We have the temple opening. We have a lot of amazing things coming. And we need to make sure that we can actually host and show the world what Salt Lake City is about. So I'm very proud to be born and raised here. And yeah, hope you guys will, will look at me as number one. Thanks.
Thank you, Lydie. Blake?
This is a very good question. I suspect if I polled the audience, what is the mayor's vision for the city for the next 10 years? I don't know if anybody could really answer that in a clear way. To me, there's sort of a fuzzy vision for what Salt Lake City should be. And I think that's very bad because right now, we've got a timeline of 10 years before we host the world on the Olympic stage. So what is the grandiose vision that we're marching towards? And what are the steps to get there? I am as deep as anybody in terms of what the city is doing and not doing, and I don't understand what the vision is. So I think when we think about Salt Lake City, the combination of mountain and trail access with city amenities is truly unparalleled anywhere in the world. We have to double down on that. And what's more, Salt Lake City is actually kind of bad at marketing ourselves. We're kind of bad at messaging. I think we could do a much better job. Just think about when you go to slc.gov, you don't see a lovely picture of somebody trail-running with an international airport behind them. You see, you know, click here to view your water bill. What's that? We have to get better at messaging and branding ourselves because truly, there is no city in America, for sure, where you could be trail-running five minutes from your house overlooking international airport and overlooking a stadium where the Golden State Warriors are going to be playing that night. I pinch myself every time I'm out trail-running. This is crazy. We have not sufficiently doubled down on this. This is something, and I think sort of painting a broad vision for what we need to do is important. And we start with the basics. Parks and roads, trails, good housing, and solving our homelessness issues. These are the basics we have to get right before we layer any sort of fun stuff on it. We have to both do the basics well and have vision. Right now, I feel we don't have either, and that's a problem.
Thank you, Blake. Jake?
All right, I love this question because it does open up your mind to what are the possibilities. For me, as a business owner, as a homeowner, as a dog dad, I like to see three things with Salt Lake City. I'd like to see a affordable city. And what does that mean? I'd like to see that the people that we call family and friends can live here and have a great quality of life. I'd like to see a safe city. I, I picture us having crime that's down. It's already down 11%, but I'd like to see that doubled, so 20% down. And then third, I'd like to see a compassionate city. We are very compassionate people. I'd like to see us addressing these mental health crises and substance abuse issues like they are compassionate. The people behind it, I want to treat those people. So I'd like to see those three things addressed. With five years, I think that's going to come fast. So how are we going to do that? Increase police patrols to bring down crime. Affordability, I think we can address that with the zoning that I was talking about. That's an easy way to address that, get us there. And then with substance abuse and mental health resources, there's a lot of private partners out there that are already working on this. I'd like to build on those relationships, and what they're doing, I think, is great. So that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Here from Chris now.
Thank you. So I was born and raised in the avenues, and we ended up moving out to the suburbs when I was, when I graduated from high school out there. And I was bullied a lot as a kid. I wasn't always this tall. But the reason I got into politics and I got into law was because I wanted to stand up for myself and use my words and relationships. And I always felt like I had a home in Salt Lake City, and I couldn't wait to move back here once I graduated. And the Salt Lake City that I want to see is the Salt Lake City that I want it to be for my daughter, for my 16-month-old daughter, what it was for me, which is the best of everything that Utah has to offer. I want our city to have a thriving cultural and sports and entertainment epicenter in downtown. I want us to welcome the world, whether it's the opening of Temple Square or welcoming the world back for the Olympics. I want us to be a world-class destination for outdoors. And I want this to be a city where people aren't priced out, where people have an option to live here. You may not, you may not have the biggest yard or it may not be the biggest house, but you have options that you can afford here in Salt Lake City. I want to build, continue to build a city that is the crossroads of the West and is the envy of the world in a lot of ways because this has been such a special place for me. It's a city that I will always fight for, and that is a vision that I will fight for for my daughter, a seventh-generation Salt Lake City resident.
Thank you, Chris. We'll hear from David now.
Vision for the next five years. Number one, I'll be a better public speaker by then, hopefully. Probably not, though. Let's not kid ourselves. But it can all be summed up in, in my logo. People and community first. I want to see a city that puts people and community first, not corporations, not billionaires. A city run by a city council and a mayor who are not beholden to wealthy donors, to their campaign fund. We need to get money out of politics. We need to get more people, more involved. And we need, we need transparency as well. When you go to a candidate's website, it should have right there on the front page a QR code or a list of the people who they are beholden to, who have given them money, who financed their campaigns. I finance my own. I'm not soliciting donations. I'm not turning them away, but I'm not soliciting them. And I think that alone, to get more people, more involved, can make such a huge difference. The, the top thing's on my flyer right here. No taxpayer handouts to billionaires. Simple as that. They're doing quite well. Thank you very much. We need to fight for truly affordable housing for those who actually need it. Not saying we're looking for affordable housing just to give kickbacks to wealthy developers who have donated to our campaigns. That's not fighting for affordable housing. And we need to address the roots of homelessness. As I mentioned before, we need to get more public services for addiction, for mental health care. MCOT is a great example where a mental health crisis team arrives on the scene instead of a cop with a gun, which is appropriate sometimes, but not most of the time. These are, these are some of the things that I really care about. I want us to fight for universal health care. We need to start talking about getting the oil refineries moved. We need to start talking about getting the oil refineries moved. I know it's going to take a long time, but it's never going to happen if we don't start talking about it. We need to move those out of our airshed.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
We've done well timewise, and we have the ability to have a couple of audience questions. And I'll ask you to remember one thing also. When you vote this year, you're using ranked choice voting, so you'll be able to rank all of these candidates, which I think is going to be really, really good because you've got a great group of candidates here. If any of the audience members have questions, we have time for a couple. Our answers will be limited to one minute. I'll sort of go through the order. Good heavens. We'll start with you.
Yes, I'm a retired, oh, excuse me, I'm going to shot. Light master's, master's level mental health professional. My degree is a master's in social work. I'm really concerned about the homeless and the mental health, what's going on. You can't help people that don't want help. There is a chronic section of homeless that they like the lifestyle. Next, we spend all this money on the backend and we're not getting anything for effort. What about spending money on the frontend, like rent help before someone becomes homeless, especially families?
What about that, Chris?
Well, hold on, I'm not done.
Well, we are. You haven't got to a question yet. I'm sort of anticipating. Let's let Chris address that. I wanted to do a couple. You back?
Okay, yes, that's a great question. You might be surprised to know this, but 75 to 80% of the people who experience homelessness in our system are rehabilitated and out of homelessness within 90 days. But there is a persistent population of homelessness that I think you're talking about that have been really difficult to reach. I've heard my opponents talk about adding social services. That's not under Utah law. We are, cities are not structured to provide social services. They don't receive those kinds of taxes. That is from the state and the county. Think back to what I said about the waiting room analogy in the ER. We have to keep pressuring these other government entities to do their part, to add the doctors, to add rooms, to build a hospital that's attached to this ER so that we can actually move people through the system and rehabilitate them. Again, we can't just be building more of the waiting room. I think that is the key here, and then I think housing is a huge piece of that as well. That is the piece where we can shine, and that's why I care so much on housing.
Thank you. Let's hear from Blake.
Your name again, sorry.
Marcia Andrea.
Marcia, thank you for the question. To me, it's a yes and. Yes, do that, and we have to do everything else. And look, maybe the city's primary responsibility isn't social services and providing rent relief, but so what? Perception is reality, and people think it's a Salt Lake City problem. So we might as well step up and try to do something about it. Because I can tell you right now, everybody in the state thinks it's our problem. So we have to do something more than we're doing today. Yes and.
Thank you. Let's hear from David.
I care very much about this issue. As I said, I work on the issue daily. I come from a very large family. Some of my family, unfortunately, are housing unstable. So I see it on both ways. And you're absolutely right. Mental health is such a huge thing, like Blake said. It's a yes and. It is Salt Lake City where so much of our homeless folks live. That's a reality. They deal with Salt Lake City police officers, they deal with Salt Lake City-based MCOT crisis teams. So Salt Lake City does have a big role to play in this, and we can use so much of the vacant land that Salt Lake City owns right now. We can set up a structure of tent, you know, camping butt kind of thing where it's actually, services are there and it's secure, they're safe, and they can get the mental health services. We just need to do everything we can, but then of course we can also enforce our camping ban so that the folks who are resistant to that will have more of an opportunity to actually get the care they need. Thanks.
I'm here for Lydie.
This is a very passionate subject for me. It's a reason why I'm running. I'm very passionate about mental health. My family here, who I work with, we have the Huntsman Mental Health Institute. We just opened up a crisis center in South Salt Lake. We are trying our hardest in our community to help those with mental health and homeless and unsheltered. My idea of a mental health task force is for me the best way to go and help all of these individuals who are really struggling. It will take away from the actual law enforcement their resources and actually help the people that actually want help, right? You can bring a horse to water, you can't make them drink, but you can provide resources for them. And I'm all about being, I want to be the advocate in City Hall for mental health because we do not have them right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Finally, we'll hear from Jake.
Thank you. A lot of the responses to the crisis that we're facing has been reactive. I think that we need to be more proactive and preventative. What does that mean? I think that it means that we need to address this before it becomes a problem. Before I got the job that I had, I was a server in another life. I was just one table away from not being able to make my rent. So it is a very real issue that people face, and I do, that gravity of that is not lost on me, but I do feel like there's things we can do to prevent this. That is affordability and substance abuse issues. A lot of these problems start with substance abuse issue of some kind. So we need to address that, and I would like to see us building up our private partnerships. Like I mentioned before, the other side of Academy, I put another plug there for them. I am amazed by what they do. They have figured it out, how to get people off the street, get them clean, and get them a job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have time for one more short question, and the fellow with the hat. Wow.
Can you read the question?
I have no idea what the question was. Something about the lake.
Can you speak that? Are you doing anything to address?
That's kind of what I thought. What are we doing about the Great Salt Lake? Our city's named after it. Let's start with Jake.
This is a great question. The lake is something that I believe the city would have power over in that we can address how we use and conserve water here within our jurisdiction. The lake should be a state and regional, it should be a country crisis. We should be worried about this on a national level. We should have a lot more involvement from federal and state partners to address this. But the city has a role to lead out in this. How would we do that? Water conservation programs and just addressing the issue at hand. If the lake dries up, we would see arsenic come up into the air, and that's a proven scientific fact. So a lot more focus on preventative measures like maybe more city land could be converted to zero scape natural Utah native plants. Just did this on my front park strip, and it is now self-sufficient. I don't water it, I don't touch it at all, and it's native Utah plants. We could see that in a smaller scale on the city land and also leading out on that.
Thank you, Jake. Let's hear from David.
As Jake mentioned, this is of course more of a state and federal issue, but Salt Lake City does play a role and can have a part of the leadership for the solutions of it. I want you, we can and should, we can and should do as much smart native landscaping as possible, but the reality is, is that all homes, all businesses, the structures in our city and throughout our state, everything only makes about seven, contributes about 7% of the use of fresh water. The absolute majority of that fresh water use is of course alfalfa and other farming. Where's it going? It's being subsidized, and so much of it is being actually shipped to literally China, Saudi Arabia. It's for cattle feed. I've been vegan for 26 years. I still ain't had a bowl of alfalfa. Where's it going? We can lead out by encouraging more plant, or I'm sorry, more water-friendly solutions, including in our daily lives, three times a day.
Thank you, David. Thanks. Let's hear from Blake.
You know, I was once in somebody's store, and they said, hey, everything you're talking about is great, but you know, none of it matters. If there's no Great Salt Lake, who cares? That is the most important thing, and I tend to agree. We have to get this right. Now, Salt Lake City has long been a leader in water conservation. I applaud them. However, we're not perfect. I'll give you an example. I live over by the cemetery, okay? It is not uncommon to see water from the cemetery overspraying onto 11th Avenue. I know many of you have seen that on a hot July afternoon, nonetheless. Why don't we start with our own plot of land? Let's start conserving our own water first and watering at smart times and making sure we're not overspraying because man, that is a lot of grass we're watering at the cemetery there. There's still a lot more room to grow in Salt Lake City.
Thank you. Lydie?
As a mom of two, this is actually something I think about a lot. It's not fun to think about it, especially when you're choosing to live here and you know the reality of what's happening. I am by no means an expert or a scientist, which is why I'm very proud to be involved with an organization called Grow the Flow. Any of you guys have heard about them? If not, look them up. I think we need to rely more on programs like Grow the Flow where they're all about education. They just were able to score $200 million for the state and big funders. Those are the groups we need to be supporting because when you're dealing with the state in these things, with the fact that the state is actually taking this as an issue now and supporting these groups, I think that's what we need to do. We need to look more at Grow the Flow. I mean, they're all about educating farmers, trying to figure this out in a way that is possible, and I think that's what we need to look at. We need to look at programs that actually are possible, and that obviously this is an issue that affects all of us. This is not a partisan issue. So anyway, everybody look up Grow the Flow because they're doing awesome stuff.
And finally, Chris.
Thank you. I totally agree that it's an existential threat to the city. That's why I have put in sustainability requirements for anybody that's receiving CRA funding. We add sustainability requirements when people come and ask for zoning changes. I led an update to all of our landscaping ordinances to try to make zero scape easier and better and easier to understand. I've also supported buying up water shares for water right diversions to the Great Salt Lake using, buying those up when they become available. But the single biggest thing that nobody up here has mentioned is that the city must defend our extraterritorial jurisdiction to control the watershed. All of the water that we control in all of the original, the seven canyons on the east, Salt Lake City and Sandy controls. Every year it's under threat when the state legislature had that taken over. If we lose that, we lose a huge, huge piece, the single biggest piece in returning water to the Great Salt Lake.
All right, thank you. We're going to allow each candidate now two minutes to close, and we're going to start with Lydie.
I just want to thank the four gentlemen that are up here tonight because it takes courage to put your name on the line, and that courage, not partisanship, is what makes democracy work. Again, District Three is where I experienced many of my first, my first speeding ticket, you can name it, I've experienced it. But it's really where I learned about adversity and advocacy at the young age of seven when I was diagnosed with type one diabetes. I want to remind you guys all again, this is an unaffiliated, nonpartisan race, and I'm very proud to be the only candidate that's unaffiliated standing up here. So often we let political parties dictate how we think, how we vote, even how we have empathy towards another person. I think we need to get back to the basics. Not one good idea comes from both sides, and I want to be able to represent every single person in this district. But we are at a turning point at downtown. We have a running deficit. Families are being priced out. Public safety, homelessness are really skyrocketing, and we really don't have an economic plan. This is very personal for me, very passionate for me. I love this city so much. This really has shaped me into who I am today, and it's a big reason why I wanted to raise my two kids here. Very passionate about mental health, public safety, and preserving this beautiful neighborhood. I love this neighborhood, the character, it's the oldest neighborhood. I'm biased, but I think it's the best neighborhood in Salt Lake. But anyway, I believe leadership is not about power, it's about priorities, and my priorities are very simple. It's about you guys, not parties. And I want to be able to bring that type of momentum and philosophy back to City Hall because this is a nonpartisan race. So thank you. I would appreciate your support. Rank me as number one. I know women come last in this state, but you can put me at number one for this one. I would appreciate it. Anyway, thank you all for coming out. I know that you guys have a billion things to be doing, but it really, this is what democracy's about, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydie. David, two minutes.
Good boy. Thanks. I need to brush up on my public speaking skills, but my writing skills are much better, so I'll read straight from my flyer here. "For far too long, elected officials have put the greed of developers, corporations, and billionaires ahead of the well-being of our community. It's time for that to change." It's absolutely true. We need to start putting people and community first, not corporations. We need to start working on community solutions and talking to our neighbors. We need to actually find neighborhood solutions. We need to get more buy-in from each of us and our community. If you ask about 100, you know, civic engagement is so huge. Really, it underlies and undermines every other issue you can imagine. So I really think it's so important that more people get more involved. I'm so happy to see so many people here tonight. It makes a big difference. Please go home and tell the people you live with, your family, your friends, your neighbors to get out and vote. It makes all the difference in the world. We do have same-day voter registrations still in Utah. They haven't taken that away yet. And of course, ranked choice voting, we need to keep that going and expand it from the top of the ballot to the bottom of the ballot. And along those lines, it of course encourages civics, it discourages mudslinging and encourages cooperation amongst candidates. So on that, I want to thank my co-candidates and all of you for being here tonight. Please check out my website, davidforSLC.com. Again, I'm not taking any money, I'm not beholden to any developers, any billionaires, but I do appreciate community support. Sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here. But we need to put more to vacant, to historic preservation, just people and community first. Please rank me first, if not first, second. I'd appreciate your consideration for second reserve rate. Thank you.
Let's hear from Chris.
Thank you again to the community councils for hosting this, and again to my opponents. My great-great-grandpa was the son of Scottish immigrants, and he dug the trenches on South Temple that we just recently replaced those clay pipes for. And he worked his way up from being a day laborer to being the streets commissioner for the city under Mayor Ezra Thompson. And I carry that spirit of service with me every day into City Hall and in all the work that I do. I have 47 relatives that are buried in the city cemetery. My family plot is there. I am committed to not only this city, but to this district and to working on these issues. But I don't want to do this job forever, but I do, I am concerned about the turnover that we've had on the council, every district changing hands over the last six years. And I want to make sure that we have some experience, and I want to keep delivering for you. In terms of affordable housing, I've added 5,000 units of affordable housing in my time on the council. In terms of parks, we've had the largest investment in parks and maintenance and in new parks in the city's history in my time on the council. Safety, all of our crime metrics for the city are going down. Downtown, we have the fastest recovery since COVID, and we have a major, major opportunity ahead of us with all of the things that are happening downtown and a way to reenlighten our downtown. I want to keep working for you because this city is in my DNA. It is who I am, and I want to keep delivering on all of these issues for another four years. And so I hope that you'll rank me first on your ballot. Thank you so much for coming tonight. If you have any other questions, please see me after. I'm happy to stay and answer them, or happy to reach out anytime. I think most of you have my cell phone number. If you don't, come get it. Give it out freely. Thank you again.
Jake?
All right, thank you. I just want to say it's such an honor to be here. I honestly am humbled by the amount of engagement that we've been able to have as a community and as a neighborhood. I've never held office before. This would be my first time doing this, something like this. But I have started a business, ran a business, and made it successful. I have also sat as a judicial assistant, and I still do, that's my day job, for about four-plus years. So I do understand how policy can affect the day-to-day lives of people. But back to the fact that I'm a business owner, that's not lost on me, that it takes work and effort, and I'm sure it's not lost on you folks. But what I want to emphasize is that what I lack in a political office or some type of career like that experience, I make up for in hard work and scrappiness. Because I made it through COVID, we never had any extra handouts or anything, we were able to turn a profit. Why? Because I pivoted. I was able to take a plan, and when it hit the fan, I was able to be successful at it. So what I want to say about that is that I know how to lead, I know how to get things done. I'm your follow-up guy. If something's not getting done, I will follow up to make sure that it is done. I just want to remind you, ranked choice voting, it's a great opportunity for you to rank your candidates. I would love to earn your spot as number one, but if not, please think of me as number two or three. It's also fine. Learn more about me and on my platform at my website, jxstrand.com. Again, come talk to me after. I'd love to get to know you better. Thank you.
And Blake.
Well, I am the only thing standing in your way between you and those delicious brownies, as I mentioned earlier, so let's wrap this up. As I mentioned earlier, it's been 20 years since a city council member or mayor in Salt Lake City has successfully won a third term. Ask her, Jill Rundin-Lavine Carlton-Crispson, were the last ones, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, in 2005. We'll talk after. You can correct the record. Why is that? After about a decade, it's just time for some fresh blood. And look, Chris has done a great job, and he's a nice guy, but 12 years is too long. Let's get a fresh pair of eyes. That is a good and normal and healthy thing. And we're going to talk after about the record. I hope I've shown you that, that I've got the passion, I've got big vision, I'm not afraid of big ideas. I can collaborate, and I can just get stuff done. To me, the most important thing is to hear your feedback, implement it, and then make sure it actually worked. That's what I do in my day job, all day. When I build software, if people aren't happy, I'm going to hear about it. They're not going to use my software, they're not going to pay me, and then I don't have a business. That is exactly the job of city council. You have to have a good meet on the needs of your district and your customers. That is all I do. That is all I do. So in closing, I just want to remind you, your ballots should be in the mailbox right now. I saw some of you literally have them in your hand. Thank you for bringing them. Please rank me number one. It's time for a change. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. That wraps up our debate with our candidates today. I want to thank the candidates for all being so civil. And I want to thank Mary Lee. And thank Mary Lee for starting us out with the dignity of the decks and ask where you were when I was running against our last two attorneys general. Because we were anything but dignified. The candidates are all going to stick around for 15 minutes, answer any of your individual questions. So please stick around and visit with the candidates. And thanks again to the candidates for being so civil. See you.